Alright everybody, good evening everyone. Welcome to tonight's board meeting, Hyde Park Central School District. It's August eighth, two thousand and twenty four. Can I get a motion adjourned to executive session for the purpose of personnel promotion, demotion, discipline suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons?
So moved.
Second, Tibbs.
Having discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're now in executive session.
Thank you.
On the district-wide safety plan for the upcoming school year, I'm Melissa Lawson. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for People's Services and the co-chair of the SAVE Committee. So, we have a district-wide safety plan in accordance with state regulations and commissioner regulations, and school districts are required to create and maintain a district-wide and building emergency response plan, and we must develop and maintain safety teams at the district level and the building level as well. The purpose of the plans is to prevent or minimize the effects of incidents and emergencies, and to facilitate the coordination of schools and school districts with county resources and emergency responders. So, our district-wide plan is on our website, and it's a draft plan for the upcoming school year. It will be up there until the evening before our next board meeting on August 22nd for public comment. There is also a Google form for any community members to comment on the draft plan so that we can use some of the feedback from our community to update our plan. And our plan will be adopted by the Board of Education at the next board meeting, and it's required to be loaded onto the state portal by September 1st. So, our plan must be updated annually. We have a district-wide safety team that meets five times a year, and at the last meeting of the year in June, we take a look at our district-wide plan and make any suggestions for updates. We also take any input from the state in regards to updated requirements and regulations, and I'll talk a little bit about some of those updates this evening. And we're required to have a public hearing, which is happening now, to provide personnel, students, and the public with the ability to comment on the plan and ask any questions. And it's made available for 30 days prior to adoption. So, I did send out a parent square to our school community probably about two weeks ago, and the plan was included in that parent square update as well. So, and again, we submit it to the State of Education Department in September. So, what does the district-wide plan include? All of our policies and procedures for responding to threats of violence, responding to the acts of violence that might occur. We have appropriate prevention and intervention steps. We want to make sure that our plan is proactive in nature. We have policies in regards to communication with families, and about our safety training, the drills that we do, and the designation of who is responsible for overseeing safety. And we also have a remote instruction plan, which is required by the state, that we have a plan that is agreed upon with the bargaining units. So, in the event that we have to go remote, like we did during the pandemic, we already have a plan in place. There are some significant changes this year per the state requirements. So, some of the things that they are asking school districts to include in their district plan is that drills must be trauma-informed and conducted in a manner that's developmentally and age-appropriate. The plans are really there to prepare and not scare students, so we want to make sure that we're not causing additional trauma by practicing our drills. So, the state has identified trauma as a definition that needs to be explained and detailed to all staff members. So, trauma, according to the state, means an emotional response to a deeply distressing or disturbing experience, such as, but not limited to, an act of violence, national natural disaster, abuse, neglect, or loss. So, that is also included in the plan. So, new this year is that districts must notify parents and families when we are doing drills. So, that's new. Typically, we've informed families after drills are completed. Now, we must inform families prior to doing drills. So, it doesn't mean that we have to tell families that on August 8th at 2:00, we'll be performing a drill. It means that the week prior, we need to send out a notification through our typical forms of communication, such as parent square, that this week we'll be conducting a fire drill and a lockdown drill, and include language on how to speak to your children about it so that they're informed and feel prepared, and offer the opportunity for families to ask questions. So, also, drills must no longer be simulation of an emergency. For example, some districts in the past have done full-scale exercises to mimic a real emergency, such as a shooting or an intrusion. So, districts are no longer able to do that. If they want to do a full-scale exercise, it must be outside of the school day, and any student participants must have written permission from a parent or guardian. So, that's something that's new as well. And drills can only occur after all staff and students have been trained. So, for example, if you remember as being a student yourself, on the first day of school, typically, there's a fire drill. You can't do that any longer until staff have talked to students and practiced and informed them where they will go during a fire drill, why fire drills are important, and the same for lockdowns. In addition, we have bus drivers and bus monitors now must be included in our safety teams, and in our district SAVE team, we do have the transportation director and assistant director as part of our team. However, we typically haven't had bus drivers and monitors on our building teams or our district-wide teams, so that's something that we will be inviting them to take part in. And it's really important to note that this is the first time that the state has said that drills must occur on different dates, different days of the week, and different times of day. So, sometimes people get into a habit of, you know, first thing in the morning, we're going to do a fire drill, and we don't practice fire drills during lunch and recess or during an assembly where kids really need to know where to go and what to do. So, the district-wide safety plan, as I said, is posted on our website for your review, and public comment continues to be open through the 21st of August. You can post comments on the Google form that is on our website, and you may also ask questions this evening if you have any. We just ask that if you do have questions, that you state your name, how you're affiliated with the district, and then provide us with your questions, and I will do my best to answer them. And this is really important. Feedback is really important so that we can make the best plan and consider all stakeholders as we want our buildings to be as safe as possible. Students can't learn if they don't feel safe, so that's really important to us. So, at this point, I'm going to conclude. One more thing that I forgot to mention is we do have building emergency response plans. Those are not released to the public. Our district plan is. The reason our building plans are not released to the public is because they have private information about how we respond to emergencies, and we don't want to put that out in the public for a whole host of reasons. But if anybody has any questions about safety protocols in their buildings, they can contact their building principals directly. So, at this time, I'm going to invite anyone to ask any questions, and this is not a formal thing. You don't have to come to the podium, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question.
Sure.
Mike Zagorski, a community member. So, the MAC DWI drill is no longer a thing?
Well, I don't believe we'll be able to do that anymore. We may be able to do it after hours and have students participate with parent permission, but it could not be part of our regular school day. Any other questions? Again, you all have an opportunity to take a look at this in detail on our website and provide feedback through the Google form. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to return to open session. May we please rise for the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think we have any agenda additions or modifications. So, can I get a motion 5.3 to adopt tonight's agenda?
Um, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Upcoming events. So, on Wednesday, August 21st, we have sixth grade parent and student orientation, and that's at Haveland at 6:30 PM. And on Thursday, August 22nd, it's the next Board of Education regular meeting here at District Office at 7:00 PM. And I think with the district, there's a comment here about district calendar. The new one will be released soon. The new one will be released soon.
Um okay, next week. That's another working on it right now.
Okay. All right, moving on to 7.1 Pride.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I've got a a couple of items to share for Pride this evening. The first one you can see on the screen here has to do with our successful completion of Session 2 of Camp Invention. Um if you're familiar with Camp Invention, you know that it is a uh a STEM-based, week-long immersive program where students uh have an opportunity to design, develop, and use their critical thinking skills to solve problems. Um it's a favorite for many, um both our staff and our students. And because of the ARPA funds that we've had over the last couple of years, we've had the ability to provide two weeks of this program instead of our traditional one week. So uh we just finished our second session of Camp Invention, which served uh approximately 100 students. And something new this year, and a special thanks, you can see a picture on the on the bottom left there, but we want to have a special thanks to our our food service department and in particular, Brandy, June, and Jenny, who are who are uh pictured there. Because we were able to, as a district that qualified for CEP this year, we were able to provide um food for all of the attendees at camp that we've never been able to do before. So I just wanted to say thank you for the to the families for entrusting us with the students for that week. Thank you for this to the staff, who did an amazing job. Um and to some of our our student volunteers from uh from FDR and and recent graduates who came back and participated. I stopped by on a number of occasions, and I have to say, there was fun being had by all involved. So that's the first item. Usually, I'm not given the the remote, so this is kind of like a big deal. All right, good, see that? Yeah, and I went the right direction, too. All right, so the the next item for Pride that I want to share um is our summer music experience. We've done this over the last couple of summers, too, and this has become a favorite. Uh but our summer music experience is a week-long program. Um it targets grades five through nine, and it ends with performances. So when we talk about authentic performance tasks, music, art, drama, PE, those are our resident experts on authentic performance tasks. In a concert like this, after an intensive, you know, few days of learning a new piece of music is a real demonstration of that. Um so again, this was offered through no charge to our families. And I just wanted to say thank you to the families, the students, and the staff who made this possible. Um you can see by the smiling faces on the screen here. Um again, fun and some pretty impressive learning and performance happened during that week. The next item I'm going to hand off to uh Ms. Steinberg.
Thank you. Uh good evening, everyone. I'm really um excited to be here to uh present the Portrait of an Employee Awards to two of the uh people that work in operations. Um when Dr. Brown asked me a few months ago to uh come up with someone from our facilities department and someone from our transportation department to provide the award for, I knew exactly who um I thought should get the award. And when I talked to the department supervisors, they had the same thinking. So I'm just really happy uh to be here and talk a little bit about uh both Anne Thadgen from the Facilities Department and Linda Lawler, uh one of our bus drivers. So uh Linda's not here with us tonight, but Anne is. So in a few minutes, I'll ask Anne to come up here. But I would like to uh just say about Linda. Uh Linda's not here because she's actually um at training uh receiving uh more knowledge and information about being a great bus driver. So we chose Linda to uh receive this award uh because this year she's actually the 2024 Duchess County School Bus Driver of the Year. Um she is the first Hyde Park bus driver uh to receive that award. And that award has been um in existence, I believe, for about 30 years. So we're really proud of her. Um Linda has been with uh Hyde Park School District for 10 years, but she does have an 18-year career as a bus driver. Um and the award that she received from uh Duchess County really exemplifies what we uh what we value in our bus drivers, too. She was awarded uh the School Bus Driver of the Year Award because of her outstanding service in safety and transporting transporting students and uh because of her uh spotless safety record. So we'll be very uh happy to pass along the certificate that we have to Linda when she comes back from her conference. For the Facilities Department, we nominated Anne for the award. Uh Anne Thadgen is the secretary for the uh Facilities and Operations Department. Um she's adept in all facets of the Facilities Department. She plays a critical role in helping the department support the district schools. Uh Anne has a really unique background. Um she did work in the superintendent's office for quite a while, and she's also a former board member from another school district. So she really understands how school districts work. Um she has a unique blend of experience and knowledge, and she's uh done many things for the district. Uh a good example of the last year is that she helped us save thousands of dollars in utility costs because she was really uh she noticed a mistake in the central Hudson billing, and she was adamant. And she did not let them uh chart overcharge us. So it was through her efforts that we were able to save those funds. So thank you, Anne. Anyone mind if I'm up here? It's not signed yet, but that's okay. Yes. Dr. Roman will have to sign it when he comes back. But yes.
Have to give it back to Jane. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Yes, we appreciate your service. Yeah.
Uh any other Pride from anyone? Okay, moving on to uh 8.1 Superintendent's Report with Dr. Roman.
Good evening, everyone. Uh wanna once again congratulate Anne and Linda, two consummate professionals. We appreciate all the service that you provide to our our school district, our students, and our families. Uh congratulations, well deserved. So this evening, I just wanted to provide uh the board with a an update from our last meeting. Um I presented the restructuring of the Human Resources Department, um which necessitated some changes with regards to position titles. Uh the same number of staff, just um uh some uh titles that were changed. Um so um the the change, just to recap really quickly, um the the vision would be um led by a chief of HR, uh which would be a certificated position, um as well as elevating one of the uh personnel assistants uh to a Personnel Associate, um which would necess necessitate abolishing one of the assistant positions uh and creating an associate position. Um one of the questions that came up was what would be the financial impact? And the financial impact is approximately $35,000 uh for the um up to $35,000 um due to the increase in the in the title in the certificated position. Um these funds would uh be si- um appropriated based on positions that we have not filled uh since July 1st, um as well as um DHIQ funds uh that we do have um that we we know uh we will be receiving for this year. Um that increase in about 10, 10, 11% um in the salaries for human resources uh for the subsequent year would have to be um considered in our new uh budget process. Um so I wanted to just uh share that with the board. Um want to congratulate um the Camp Invention folks and the folks uh with the Fine and Performing Arts. Uh just concur with what Dr. Brown shared. A tremendous program uh and leaders that put that program together. And we just appreciate all that you do to extend the learning for students uh in the summer. And uh last two things uh that I do want to share, uh first and foremost, um this is uh Dr. Brown's uh last uh board meeting. And uh I just wanted uh just share a sincere uh appreciation and gratitude for all that you've contributed uh to our district. Uh we truly appreciate your leadership, uh your courage, and your your laser focus on on ensuring every student has uh equitable opportunities and access uh to high-quality instruction. So we just uh truly appreciate you. I want to give you a round of applause, and I hope the team could join me in doing that. And uh this evening, we have a number of new hires. Um and so um after the um the consent to approve all the new hires, I I'd just like to uh share a couple of words um with the new members that are joining our team. Uh that concludes my items. Uh Mr. President?
Thank you. Uh any questions for Dr. Roman? Okay, moving on to 8.2, a report from Ralph R. Smith, the SCEP Plan with uh Mr. Darling and Dr. Brown.
Sure. Before we get started, I just wanted to take a moment and just say um, Dr. Roman, thank you. I can't see your face on the screen anymore, but thank you for the the very kind words. And and for those of you that are here that I've had the opportunity to work with um and lead alongside, just a the feeling of gratitude, I'm having trouble putting in words. Um but it's real, and uh I'm not good at saying goodbye, so I'm going to say, see you soon. And I look forward to new and different ways for us to collaborate. And I know that our paths will cross again soon. So for those of you that are here, thank you. Oh, now I can see you, Dr. Roman. There you are. All right. So uh Mr. Darling and I are going to share a little bit with you about our um DCEP. In education, there's lots of acronyms, so I'll let you know what each of them are as we go. But the DCEP is the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan, and the ESIP is the School Comprehensive Education Plan. Um we've had conversations about this over the last couple of years as we've worked through this process with Haviland Middle School. Um but I thought it important at this juncture to provide a little bit of historical context to the discussion so that it's not lost in the in the overall uh plans and improvement efforts that we have going. So if you would indulge me, I want to start by focusing on on, you know, some of our most important district documents. The first is our mission, which we've updated this past year and the board adopted most recently, um to empower all of our learners to be successful members of our dynamic society. And I wanted to point out our vision, that place that we want to go, that place we want to be, is an innovative learning community for all. And then those core values around honoring achievement, providing physical, psychological, emotional safety, celebrating diversity and accountability, um mutually beneficial partnerships. That means we have to partner with everyone inside the community and outside um our school learning community. Um and then really just ensuring that we demonstrate integrity, respect, compassion, and empathy in all that we do. And I know, after working with um Mr. Darling here, that not only is the mission embedded in the plans that we've put together, the core values um are there as well. And I believe that the steps we're going to take over the next couple of years will have a profound impact, just like the steps we've taken at Haviland in reaching our vision. Some talked just recently, um Linda just shared a little bit about the the recognition for the Portrait of the Hyde Park Employee. We also have a Portrait of a Learner. So the Portrait of the Learner and Portrait of the Hyde Park uh employee both share the same five attributes, but obviously, they look and feel different when it's being something that's um uh something that's being demonstrated by a student or a learner versus one of our employees. And I want to give you a quick overview of what the New York State Education Department Accountability Process is, because that's what this is about. So um if we back all the way out, there's something called the Every Student Succeeds Act. And the Every Student Succeeds Act replaced something you might be more familiar with, but No Child Left Behind, which replaced the Elementary and Secondary Schools Act, which dates back to um I think the the Johnson Administration, if if my memory serves me. I see some people nodding their head. We have a a resident uh uh social studies expert in the front row here, Dennis. Am I right? It's the Great Society was where where that? Yeah, okay, good. So it's gone through, phew. I didn't, I should have thought that through, knowing that you were here. I shouldn't have looked it up. Um but these acts are federal law. So our legislators um at the federal level put these into place to help fund our school systems across all of our states. Those funds are then, it requires each state to create a plan of how they're going to utilize those funds and how they're going to be held accountable to the federal government for the use of those funds. The states then, in turn, in New York State, provide funding to over 700 school districts, public school districts. Those 700 school districts have to create plans and have accountability to the state on how they're going to use those funds. So you see how that works? So the federal government sends the money to the states. There's accountability there. The states send the money to the school districts. There's accountability there. The school districts actually use the schools on programs, which you're going to see on the Consent Agenda and New Business, that those are things you see on a regular basis. Um but we also are required to consult with many private um or non-public schools that are both within our district boundary and outside our district district boundary that serve our students. So that's how the flow of funds works. And with federal, state, and local funds, um comes accountability measures. So that the accountability model for New York State involves several different levels. The level that you're probably most familiar with used to be called um Good Standing. About two years ago, the state changed that moniker from Good Standing to Local Support um and Improvement. That was an acknowledgement that all schools should be looking to continuously improve every year, not just if you're on a list. The next level is Targeted Support um and Improvement. That's usually if a subgroup within a school is not performing at the same rate as this as their um as their peers, essentially. And by peers, I mean within the school or across the state of New York. The additional targeted support um and improvement, or ATSI, that happens if you've put plans in place and you've failed to show improvements. They provide additional funding, and they provide additional oversight. Comprehensive Support and Improvement, or CSI, is when the all-students indicators um are showing that all students in a school building are not performing at the same level um as their peers across the state. So Local Support and Intervention is the continuous improvement process that we do as a district every year in every building. Targeted Support and Intervention or Improvement now is what we're going to talk about today, um which has to do with one subgroup in one of our buildings. In this case, it's Ralph R. Smith, and it's our students with disabilities. If a school has a subgroup or an all-students group that's identified as needing improvement, then the district moves from Local Support and Improvement, LSI, to Targeted um a Targeted District. When this happens, a TSI or an ESIP plan at the school level needs to be created with substantial input from the teachers and the families. And a DCEP has to be created at the district level to both support the school that has been identified and all of the other schools in the district to both help raise performance across um all buildings and all grade levels. I'm going to stop there and just see if there are any questions because I kind of covered a lot in one slide from from funding and how the accountability works to where we are, and I'll share with you a little bit more about the subgroups in just a moment. Any questions? All right. There'll be other opportunities. You can interrupt at any time. I wanted to provide a little bit more um information here about what happens at each of these levels. So as I said, schools identify for Targeted Support and Improvement, or TSI, have low performance and accountability in a subgroup rather than the all areas group. So there's just some more information on the slide that digs in on percentages, what that looks like, what those subgroups are. Um in this case, the accountability groups for New York State are listed there. Um we have, and forgive me, these are the subgroups as named by New York State, American Indians and Alaskan Native, Asian or Native Hawaiian, Other Pacific Islander, Black or African American, Hispanic or Latino, Multicultural, White, Economically Disadvantaged, English Learner, and Students with Disabilities. Okay, so in the first year of low performance, the subgroup is identified as TSI. And for uh the Hyde Park School District, we're looking at one subgroup, that's Students with Disabilities in one of our schools, which is uh Ralph R. Smith currently. As I stated before, the District Accountability Supports Model As I stated before, the District Accountability Supports Model, this is the same thing. So any CSI, ATSI, or TSI designation shifts the district from Local Support Improvement to Targeted Districts. So here are all of our schools plus the district. So you can see that the Hyde Park Central Duke School District is in Support Model Targeted Districts, and that's because the Ralph R. Smith School is a Targeted Support and Improvement School or designated model right now for that subgroup I just mentioned. You can see that all other buildings are currently Local Support and Improvement, formerly known as Good Standing. All right, so what do we have to do? In, pretty much in January, we get an initial report from the state that says, this is what, how the students performed last year on their state assessments. In particular, we're looking at math, and we're looking at ELA, grades three through eight, and if it was the high school, they'd be looking at Regents Exam and Graduation tests. The science exams in grades five and eight are also. When targeted for this support, you have to start building a team and a plan. That requires annual surveys of parents, staff, and students, and you're probably saying, "Wait a minute, don't we do that anyway?" Right. Because we act as if every year, even if you're Local Support Improvement, because it's the right thing to do. We complete needs assessments in each building every year. So you're seeing a lot of these requirements, there are things that are built into our annual process. But then you've got the Comprehensive Education Plan that needs to be submitted to the district for approval, that's what we're going to do tonight, and the DCEP Plan that needs to be submitted to New York State. I submitted that before the deadline, and the dead nut line was July 31st. So that's been submitted, we'll receive that part of the plan back with feedback from the state in the next couple of weeks. And then for those of you that have been following along at home over the last couple of years, this is our Data for Continuous Improvement Framework Model. You can see the top portion is where we do these assessments of our demographics, our perceptions, our student performance, and then our school systems. You do that every year. The mission and vision, we just did that part last year, that kind of answers the question, who we are and who do we want to be? And then the evaluation improvement efforts are what are built into these plans. So I'm going to let Mr. Darling share a little bit about the Ralph R. Smith School Comprehensive Education Plan, its team, and its development.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you're all enjoying your summer so far. And for those of you that I don't know in the audience, my name's Matt Darling, Principal at Ralph R. Smith Elementary School, and I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to present the work that our TSI Committee has completed over the course of the spring. We, like Dr. Brown said, we found out January-ish that we were identified as a TSI school for students with disabilities, and so we quickly put a team together. It's listed there, but we had a good combination of teachers in both general education and special education, teaching assistants. We had two parents who were able to join the committee, which we really appreciated, Joanna Murphy and myself as administrators. But aside from that, I just want to thank our whole faculty and staff, because they contributed a lot, not necessarily at the formal TSI meetings, but just over the course of the school year in terms of feedback that was provided both formally and informally through a variety of ways, that I think the teachers and staff members on our committee, as well as parents, were able to take some of that feedback that was gathered informally and utilize it in addition to the activities that we did in this process to come up with a plan that we think meets the needs of not just our students with disabilities, but all the students at Ralph R. Smith. So over the course of the spring, we met several times, and the titles of those meetings are basically activities that we completed that are recommended by New York State. Some of them, we added a little variety based on our specific building, but for the most part, we stuck with the template that's outlined in the 35-page document attached to the board agenda today. And again, I just want to recognize something that Dr. Brown mentioned, that this is a process that all the buildings go through every year, and I've been in a situation where we were, where I was identified as a TSI school in a previous district that didn't have that in place. And then the process is so much more overwhelming, because you're not only trying to create this plan, but you're trying to build a foundation of how to gather all the information needed to complete the plan. So I just want to commend the district for the last several years of putting this process in place for all the buildings to take part in. So the three commitments that our team was able to identify over the course of the spring are in line with pretty much all the other buildings and goals that they've identified in the district this year. First and foremost, our first commitment is that we're committed to aligning our literacy instruction with the science of reading in order to improve academic achievement. As many of you know, this has been a big conversation, not just in the district, but in the region, over the course of the last few years. And we've identified all of our students, but particularly students with disabilities, as not performing up to where we would like them to be. And so we need to take a hard look at that and see what are some of those indicators on why we're not meeting proficiency the way we want to be within that specific subgroup, but also within our student body as a whole. And then put some strategies in place that are listed below there, and those three strategies are all evidence-based, so I'll talk a little bit about each one. The first strategy that we're going to be implementing this year is full implementation of the UFLY curriculum. That's the University of Florida Literacy Institute, and they put out a teacher's manual, it's a systematic explicit phonics program a few years ago called UFLY Foundations. So we piloted that over the course of the last year, we had several teachers take part in that, and we saw some really good results in our students, especially in grades K through two, as well as grades three, four, and five for students with disabilities or students that were falling into the Tier Two or Tier Three level of support needed in phonics instruction. So that's something that we're going to be scaling up to all staff K2, and all teachers 3, 5 will have access to that program as a means to support students that are still lacking in phonics skills. So that's something we're really excited about, and we also have teachers that implemented the program previously that are going to be providing some of that professional development and resources for staff to help support them, which we're excited about as well. The second strategy that we're going to be implementing to achieve that commitment is utilization of a book called The Writing Revolution, which is basically strategies to teach writing across content areas. So not just in terms of our writing block in ELA, but across content areas in terms of science, math, social studies, you know, equipping students to be proficient writers, not just when they're writing the narrative essay in their writing block, but across all subject areas. And lastly, we're going to be, the strategy we're going to be using this year is providing differentiated small-group literacy instruction. And in order to do that, we're going to be partnering with Dr. Katie Cunningham, who was one of the authors on Shifting the Balance, which is a bestselling book that came out in the last few years. And so she's going to be providing some structured PD for teachers. I want to shout out Jen Kreiser, who has been working with me in the committee over the course of the spring, and we took some time to meet with Dr. Katie Cunningham on a few occasions, and just explain kind of where we're at with our curriculum in reading and where we'd like to go in terms of student proficiency. And she is going to be with us for several days over the course of this year to provide teachers with some specific training in the science of reading, and that's going to be coupled with several other trainings that the district has already moved to purchase over the course of this year, such as a letters training and some other things that they've brought in as well. So those, that's really our primary focus, is improving literacy instruction and ultimately academic achievement, because that's what gets you off of lists like this, is how students perform in ELA and math, you know, as well as science, like Dr. Brown said. But, you know, primarily, if students are more proficient in reading, it's going to benefit them across the board. Our next two commitments are just as important, but ultimately, we think that they're going to help students engage in instruction more easily and ultimately make them more prepared to do well in school academically. And so Commitment Two is that we're committed to fostering an environment that supports character development while strengthening interpersonal relationships and school connectedness. And the strategies that we identified for this commitment, I want to shout out Joanna Murphy, who attended a training about Meaningful Work, which was a book or strategy published in 2011, and she shared that with the committee. The basic idea of that evidence research-based strategy is that, similar to how teachers have a classroom job routine, and students might be line leader or, you know, tech guru, some of those jobs that we see in elementary classrooms, we're going to be expanding that to a building-wide level, because it does work to help students engage in school and feel a sense of responsibility for coming to school as well. So you'll see that strategy in our attendance commitment. But really, we want to make students, especially students to have a history of chronic absenteeism or lack of engagement or motivation in school, to give them some additional responsibility and a sense of belonging. So there's several jobs that the committee came up with to support that, some are even as silly as like plant waterer. But the idea of just having a student go around once a week and water all the plants for teachers in the building, might take them 20 or 30 minutes, but we've seen, and the evidence has shown, that that encourages students to not only increase their positive mindset towards school and their connection to school, but also their attendance in school. The next strategy that we identified for this commitment is to roll out building-wide expectations and revamp our positive reinforcement system. So that's something our student council and our teachers have been working on over the last year and a half or so, and we're going to fully implement that going into this year. Essentially, a PBIS model, where students are explicitly taught the expectations, and then there's a system for regular and frequent reinforcement. So we had the basics of that already, but we're going to be expanding that, because one of the shortcomings that we saw was basically that we weren't frequent enough with our positive praise on a building-wide level. And so we're going to, our goal is to significantly increase the number of positive referrals so that students achieve that more often. The third strategy is something similar that the whole district is actually going to be participating in, which is restorative practice training. So Melissa Lawson and her department had shared that resource this spring. We had two teachers attend a training on restorative practices, and we'll be bringing that back in the fall to turnkey with all staff members. But essentially, the idea is not a replacement of a consequence, but making sure that when there are behavioral infractions, that it's a learning experience and not just a punishment. And so that's something that is really ingrained in the elementary level, but that we want to systematically ensure that all classrooms at Ralph R. Smith are implementing that with consistency. And the fourth strategy, this is something that we heard from the parents' survey, as well as teacher and student surveys that went out last year, was that we want to expand upon our enrichment opportunities for students, and we think that that will, similar to the high school and middle school level, just increase the connectedness and sense of belonging for students. And so some of those things that we've identified and talked about are phonics club, we've talked about doing a gardening club, and so we've allocated some funds through this TSI process towards that cause. And really, you know, students are very engaged with the before-school activities that we have, like games club currently, as well as girls on the run after school. But those are essentially the two main things that we offer, and so we want to expand upon that for our elementary students and help them, you know, feel that sense of belonging at school. And then the third commitment, this is an area that I'm pretty proud of, our building for the growth that we've made over the last year and a half or so, but we want to continue to improve in this area, because again, it's going to directly correlate to improvement in not just literacy achievement, but academic achievement overall. And so that's to decrease our percentage of students that are chronically absent. So this past year, we went from about 24.5% of students being chronically absent, which is 18 days of school or more that they missed, to 17.5%, which is a significant improvement and one that we're very proud of. But it's still a hindrance to have 18% of students miss 18 or more days of school during the course of the year. So many of the same strategies in Commitment Two are carried over in Commitment Three, such as meaningful work in terms of building those building-level jobs or building-wide jobs for students, and a PBIS, a structured PBIS plan for the building to reinforce students and to praise them for being there and doing the right thing on a regular basis. And then lastly, the third strategy is to expand upon our attendance team, which is something that we started last year. Our SEL staff, we would sit down once a month from the winter through the end of the school year and look at the list of students that were chronically absent or borderline chronically absent, and ensure that we were doing what we needed to do in terms of outreach and strategizing to support them and their families as best we could. And so we're going to be expanding upon that in a few ways this year, specifically, on my end, making the, those meetings have more of a protocol, as opposed to just kind of open conversation about the students, but have a systematic way and a list of strategies that we can kind of check off and go down the list on, to continue to improve in that area and to continue to support students to improve their academic achievement. So this is a quick synopsis of the 35-page document that the team worked on. But again, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak on it. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I want to shout out our TSI Committee, who a few members are here tonight, so thank you.
Thank you for that. I'm really excited to see the growth, because these are very specific commitments, and they match up perfectly with what we've been seeing in the data, so that's exciting. Sorry, the teacher in me. I'm just seeing a lot of, so we're adding UFLY and Writing Revolution. Is there any plans to pull back on other things, because, you know, the day's only so long?
Yeah.
Make sure that the time is available for these new commitments.
Great, great question. And I would say this is something over the course of the last few years that has been a, really a teacher-led priority of feeling like our literacy block might not be reaching students and might not be utilized in the best way possible. And so teachers have been really participated in that literacy audit committee to look at that literacy block and say, what is the best means to teach foundational reading K2 and as well in 3, 5? And so we are shifting away a little bit from the units of study in reading with Lucy Quarkins, and so that opens up some more time with, in terms of the explicit phonics instruction at UFLY, and we do have the phonics block built in to everybody's instructional day, and also that small-group time for students to be working with the teacher in a small group, as opposed to conferring one-on-one with them, which is what we have been doing with the units of study over the last few years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great question.
And so I would just echo that also, teacher and myself and curriculum director, what kind of trainings have the teachers been provided with in the spring and the summer to prepare them for, especially the science of reading and these new initiatives that Margaret mentioned?
Yeah, great question. One of the main things that we wanted to focus on and talked, that we talked about as a committee, was ensuring that all teachers have the access to participate in the trainings. And so when we do them over summer, we miss pockets of folks that obviously can't, you know, not all teachers, because of vacations and other commitments, can participate in trainings over the summer. So we have that time scheduled early in September, both, you know, around that opening day time, but also the faculty meeting and several other occasions over the course of September, to make sure that all teachers have all the information and all the expectations for that literacy block. But also to have Dr. Katie Cunningham, who will be doing two full days, specifically with the differentiated instruction and small-group literacy instruction, to have that take place in September. And then the coaching cycle of that could take place between September and the middle of the school year to really keep a pulse on how teachers are doing. And for that avenue, we're going to be, we're going to be doing smaller groups of time with Dr. Cunningham, who, you know, will meet with kindergarten and first grade, for example, but not the whole building. That way, kindergarten and first grade have an opportunity to ask some more specific questions to their grade level and say, you know, just do some problem-solving activities, where they can talk about, since the beginning of the school year, what they're seeing and feeling during that literacy block, and get some feedback from her as well. what they're seeing and, and feeling during that literacy block and get some feedback from her as well.
Matt, do you mind if I?
Yes.
I just add one piece because, uh, Ed, you're going to probably have a similar question when I share my slide that looks like this. This plan starts on the first day of school. So while some of the things that are on here, Matt, uh, alluded to the fact that they piloted some of these things in the last school year, the expectation is not that full implementation happens on the first day of school. The plan towards full implementation starts on the first day of school. So if you look through that 35-page document, after each commitment, there is a description of what success would look like if it was achieved and when you believe those success points or those achievement points would happen. So as you get those updates throughout the school year, that's when we touch back to those. And what's interesting and I think is somewhat new, I didn't notice it on the previous plans we did, was they added another column that's basically like what actually happened? So it's like, here's what you think is going to happen, here's what you're planning for is going to happen. And then when you do the reflection document, that's the basis of next year's planning document, they have a column now so you can kind of reflect on, well, you know, we thought we were going to train 40 teachers and we trained, you know, 35 or we trained everyone. So.
Thank you.
All of those accountability measures are built in that pretty long plan, along with descriptions for regions.
Yeah, good.
Thank you. Let me try to move this one along a little bit quicker here because I know our, you guys have another long piece of the agenda, but I, I just want to say thank you for your, your attention so far. So as I said before, and Matt reiterated, and Matt, thank you, I forgot that you had been involved in a process like this in another district. I've been in a process like this in another district as well, um, and it is daunting. And frankly, um, the school district comprehensive improvement plan is very limited in scope. And so is the school improvement plan. And the district and the building try to figure out how to build a plan while doing it at the same time, which makes it really hard to implement in any kind of meaningful way. So you see a lot of meetings on here and a lot of dates. That's because we do this every year and they were already pre-planned. So I didn't want you to think that we got identified in January, well, how, how did you have a, a meeting back in, you know, October about this? It's because we act as if every year. So how do we do that? We do that through our district leadership team that meets, our instructional district leadership team that meets, focuses on, um, the instructional side of the house, the professional development committee that looks at the same needs assessments and says, what type of professional development do we need? And how can we be responsive in the way that we gather that information and provide it? We've got our, our surveys and you can see they're pretty robust. So, you know, they are virtual, they go out, they are anonymous, but there were almost 1,500 parents that participated, over 2,000 students that gave us, uh, feedback, um, you know, and again, you know, 349 staff members that participated. That's a really good sample size, um, from our district and our community, which leads us forward with a higher degree of confidence than maybe, you know, three or four years ago when we either didn't have this information or we had it in a very limited way. So I feel like our, our plans are more targeted in that way. You've got the ESIP team that met, Mr. Darling just shared with you some of that. Um, and then something we added this year that was a little bit different. We held virtual and in-person feedback sessions with the community. It was probably very similar to when the board holds, um, they're, you know, come and meet with the board. Like forgive me, I can't remember what it's called. The chat, the community chat, yeah. So, yeah, we called ours the Community Feedback and Engagement Session. And we held different times of the day, in the morning. We held one at lunchtime virtually and we held one in person in the evening. There were about, what, eight people that participated? It went out to everybody, encouraged people to participate, um, in the future. But I have to say, the feedback from the group, um, Matt alluded to some of the changes that we made. It's always insightful. And one of the things that I left personally, um, with was that we use so many acronyms and I always said that at the beginning, that, and, and people don't feel comfortable asking, what is that? And we have to go beyond that because halfway through a presentation with a parent and they say, what is, what is an IEP? Or what is an SEP? Or what is it? Like, it's, it's really important that, that we both, those questions when we have them and then we do a better job of communicating what's become like a professional language, um, and kind of jargon speak. So those are those. The priority areas that the district came up with are congruent with the, uh, commitments that the building came up with, but this happens through feedback from the instructional DLT and the building leadership team process. So this year's priority areas are similar to last year's, but there's some nuanced differences. So I just want to, want to acknowledge both the instructional DLT that met, providing feedback and really crafted these after looking at all the needs assessments and the building leadership teams who put those needs assessments together for the instructional DLT to evaluate. One of the ways that we do this in alignment is we set goals. So I just wanted to give you a sample sheet here because we have a district-wide goal this year around attendance. So what does that mean? That means that it's tied to a priority area, directly priority area two. Each building and each administrator then says, how do, what do I do in my work every day? Or what do we do as our building in our context? Or what do I do in my classroom, I mean, my smaller context? What do we, what do we do in these different areas to further that goals? That we're all moving in our own ways, in our own contexts, towards the same, um, achievement and outcomes. And then as a, a district, we check in. So in October and December, we reflect on our implementation, implementation plans. In January and February, we go back in and look at implementation halfway through. We look at that, um, gauging success document that I just referenced to see, are these benchmarks being hit? And then we make some adjustments mid-year and then we use what we've learned to craft the plan for the following year. So that's sort of the, the quarterly check-in and formal ways that we assess our plans and our goals at all different levels. The priority areas for this year come along with the DCIP plan or the Comprehensive Improvement Plan activities. So you're going to see these are supportive for all of the buildings, not just Ralph R. Smith, but are particularly targeted with feedback from the ESIP team. Part of the process that I didn't mention is that the ESIP team does this separate from the districts. It's designed that way on purpose. And then they give us their plan and we're required to reflect on their plan and build our plan to support them. So this is not something that like the district decided and then, Matt, you have to do these things and Matt, you and your staff have to learn these things. It's actually designed the other way around. It starts with the building that has a need and then that moves up. And then the district plan is designed to wrap around that. So the science of reading training, it's not Ufly, it's not, um, some of the other things that Matt talked about with, uh, Katie Cunningham, but the science of reading is what that common theme. So K-5 teachers are going to receive letters training this year. Our goal is to train 39 teachers a year over the next three years. That's an ambitious goal. We also are coupling into that, um, authentic performance task development. If you're a member of the instructional DLT, you worked with a different Dr. Cunningham, but will continue to work with Diane this year, uh, to build authentic performance tasks in support of those graduation measures changes that we saw from the Board of Regents. So in November, we're going to find out what those changes actually are and what the timeline is. And I'm proud to say, we've already spent the last eight months gearing up for this, working with the consultants that the state education department has been calling to consult with. So I feel like we're on, on a good track there and these authentic performance tasks are going to change the way that we assess what students know. We've shifted to a content coaching model with the, uh, board support, so thank you for that. From math coaches 18 months ago to including ELA coaches, uh, or literacy coaches that are going to start this September. We've really been working on our co-teaching model, um, shifting the, the way that that's done and providing additional support to teachers. We're going to do that with some peer observation time this year included. And then the, the focus of our, uh, time on superintendent's conference days this year is going to be looking at our tier-one instruction, basically at three different levels. What do we do and when do we do it? Like the scope and sequence. Is what we do and when we do it aligned with the standards because they've changed a lot? And if they are, are we assessing both the content and the skills and attributes, um, that we find in the standards and we find in our portrait, what we as a community value? For priority area two, we're going to be looking at culturally responsive and sustaining education. There's mandates from the state and some really great documents about how you can use a culturally responsive, um, approach to classroom instruction. What does that mean? That means be responsive to the students in front of you. Make sure that the content examples that you're using shift year to year to be the most relevant to the students and their experiences. That helps not only, uh, achievement go up, but it helps a sense of belongingness. We're going to implement, uh, fully an SEL screener, which allows us to say, alright, one of the castle criteria is responsible decision-making. If students are telling us, feedback-wise, my, my peers and myself maybe are not making responsible decisions, then that's something that we can target instruction again around in our SEL blocks. We want to increase our family engagement opportunities to more than just quarterly this year. Uh, we're working on an attendance matters campaign that you're going to hear more about. That'll be funded in part through this. The restorative practices, uh, Mr. Darling already spoke about. But that would go beyond just Ralph R. Smith. Uh, we're working on, uh, they're called data dashboards, but essentially, um, more real-time data for teachers at the classroom level and administrators at the building level to make, uh, informed decisions in real-time on instruction, not just waiting till the five-week report, the progress report or the end-of-the-year report cards. Um, and then a common process for building goals, setting them and tracking, which I just showed you a sample of. And then, you know, finally, we're going to continue with our annual comprehensive needs assessments at all levels. So that's not new, that's continued in this plan. I'll just pause for a second. Is there anything on that list that you're curious about or have questions about? Okay, so what are our next steps? Well, the DCIP was submitted, as I said, um, before July 31st. The budgets have to be submitted by the end of August. The DCIP is funded with $50,000, the ESIP is funded with $75,000, which is an increase. It was $50,000 previously. Well, previous to that, it was $75,000, then the state cut it to $50,000 and then they've restored the funding back to $75,000. And there's a little note there. I want you to know that, and it should say 150, not 100, because they, they, uh, they, they changed or 125, rather, they changed the funding. All the things that are in that plan, they run at a, at more than 125,000. So our title grants are all geared and the state asks you to do that, are all geared in supporting this aligned work. Our Title I, II and IV grants are all focused on supporting this and our general fund. So some of the things that you've supported in the past and will continue to support, help fund those as well. So this is like a supplement instead of, um, the only way to do our, to run our improvement efforts. The next thing is tonight, you're getting a presentation. You have both of those documents that are available publicly. And you're going to be asked to approve of those and the state has to approve the district plan. And then the plans have to begin no later than the first day of school. And we actually have had some work as late as yesterday and today go on with groups that are designing curriculum, aligning curriculum, we're doing the, the literacy audit. And then on our second day, Back for Teachers, on September 4th, we'll be jumping right into activities aligned to this. So that is the end of our presentation and we're open to your feedback and questions. I'll, I'll beat you to the punch, I realize the presentation was too long, so we'll self-impose that feedback. But, um, any other feedback or questions you might have, we're, we're open to it.
Mia looks good. Good job, a lot of work.
Thank you to the team and the, the many, many, many people who gave feedback, um, and participated. Principal Darling, thank you for your commitment.
Yes. I think you have to, you're on the agenda twice, so you just have to repeat everything you just did. Nobody will mind. Okay, well, we're skipping 8.3 because 8.3 and 8.2 are really the same, uh, agenda item. They were just two, four cases. Yeah, the, the first one is the big, the big report and then the second one was what you showed. Alright, moving on to 9.1. Can I get a motion to enter public participation?
Oh, two seconds.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unopposed? Motion carried. Please note, as a general rule, public participation is limited to three minutes per speaker with the first public participation segment limited to 21 minutes. The segment of time may be modified by the board as deemed appropriate. The board requests that remarks be courteous and respectful of all. Would anyone like to address the board?
Hi, I'm Julia Scoon, I'm a fourth grade teacher at Ralph R. Smith. I'm a teacher, I'm a mother, I'm a nurse, I'm a therapist, I'm a mediator, I'm a friend and I'm a colleague. For the last several months, I've experienced biased discrimination and harassment. I'm a passionate teacher who has poured my heart and soul into teaching fourth grade at Ralph R. Smith this past year. On paper, I look like a new teacher, but I've been teaching for 11 years. I've taught almost every single grade in my certification area, which is elementary education and literacy education, from 3rd through 6th grade. All of my experience as a teacher has been in the inner-city school districts. For those of you that came to support me, thank you. And for those of you that are not aware why I'm here, I've been on the termination agenda on and off since May and have been dealing with the stress of this situation for the majority of my pregnancy. About one month after I let the district, district know about my pregnancy, I was called in for a meeting and was completely blindsided with a termination letter. My principal, Matthew Darling, and human resources Shelby Outwater slid me a letter across the desk and walked out. Neither of them said anything or came back in the room. This was very unusual as Mr. Darling and I have a great professional relationship all year. When I tried to speak with them about this, days after the meeting, I was asked to, I was asked to be, um, directed to speak with Dr. Roman for a letter of reason. When I reached out to Shelby, I wrote her a letter stating how I felt discriminated against and her response was, her response was, I'm in receipt of your email. Because no one was speaking to me or explaining to me why I was being recommended for termination. I was confused, anxious and stressed. I had never had a letter in my file, no warning, no meeting, no any indication that would allow me to think that this could ever happen. After requesting a letter of reasons explaining the recommendation of termination from Dr. Roman, I waited over a week and finally received a letter with the alleged reasons from him. Every single reason in that letter were points made by an administrator who is the head of the mentor program, which I'm a part of. It just so happens to be the same administrator also did my unannounced observation. My principal has given me praise all year long, great scores on my evaluation. Even Dr. Roman has been in my room multiple times, has seen me teach, has complimented me. As you would imagine, receiving this information would feel, was, would feel like you're hit with a ton of bricks. I've continuously felt confused and disturbed. According to Dr. Roman's letter, nearly every point is feedback from one individual who should not have more authority than the superintendent or my building principal. This is alarming and unsettling. As a union member, I reached out to the union with hopes of support. I left that meeting with more questions than answers. I was told to resign and say, I wanted to stay home with my family. I don't believe such comments would be made if I were a male teacher. It is extremely concerning that one month after I said I was pregnant, I was given a termination, which termination letter, which 100% was based on one administrator's opinion, who observed me for a combined total of 40 minutes. This administrator is in charge of the mentor program for the district and one of the individuals assigned to perform teacher evaluations. Yet, when I shared my goals to improve.
It's three minutes, let's start.
I'll forfeit my.
That doesn't work that way.
Okay, well, I'll finish your speech for them. How about that? You're really going to cut her off? Is that really what you're going to do?
We, we have three minutes per speaker and we have to respect that.
So you're going to cut her off?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay, so.
Can I continue or?
Just.
Yep, I'll, I'll, I'll wrap it up.
Okay.
This administrator made multiple discriminatory remarks and she, um, knew the remarks were inappropriate because she informed me she should not be writing them on my official form. If a man made the same comments to me that were made, it would have been a red flag. It would have been taken seriously, but instead my, my complaints were overlooked and even though I was belittled, unappreciated and received several biased comments from this administrator, I have never been so disrespected in my teaching career. According to APPR, my, after my observations were averaged out at the end of the year, I'm a teacher in good standing. I care deeply about the social, emotional and educational needs of my students and in his career choice, I'm proud of every day. I have past students reach out to me every year telling me how much they miss me. I influence them or simply just saying hello. This is why I do what I do. If this board passes my termination, I will be unemployed, eight months pregnant, going into the new school year without a job. I will give birth in September, which will make it next to impossible for me to find a teaching job over the year. I will not have insurance for my family and my three kids. We will be living in a one-income family of five. I typically know the board passes along recommendations by the superintendent. However, you have the chance to make a difference. The board's supposed to be a system of checks and balances. The board's supposed to be a system of checks and balances. To quote the law acts by Dr. Seuss, "Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing's going to get better." It's not. This is why I've come to speak my story here tonight. Some people think I'm foolish for speaking here, but I believe that's what's right, and a change needs to be made. I hope that anyone, regardless of their circumstance, has the opportunity to thrive and grow, grow in a district without fear of discrimination, harassment, and bias. I hope that no one after me has to go through the stress that I've endured in my entire pregnancy due to this matter. Discrimination, harassment, bullying, bias, and toxic work environments are not and should not be acceptable, and I'm not here tonight looking for sympathy or empathy. I'm here tonight and hoping that the district, the district and board will not permit this behavior to me or anyone else.
Anyone else like to address the board?
I actually have a, a letter that a parent of Julia's class this year asked me to read because she was unable to attend. My name is Kim Lorenz, I'm a teacher at Ralph R. Smith, but the parent reached out to me. It says, "To whom it may concern, as the parent of one of Ms. Sefon's students this past school year in fourth grade at Ralph R. Smith Elementary School, I've experienced firsthand the level of commitment, compassion, and effort that she put into her work. My child's class was definitely a challenging one, as was every fourth-grade class this year. Without Ms. Sefon, my child would not have succeeded this past year. She was comforting, compassionate, provided well-behaved students with positive reinforcement, encouraged them to continue to work their hardest. My child still made great educational progress despite being in a challenging environment, again, all due to Ms. Sefon's attentiveness and care. I was fortunate enough to attend a field trip where I was able to see how Ms. Sefon positively dealt with students of all behaviors, and I felt happy to know that my child was in good hands. She also kept connected with parents via almost every day chats on ClassDojo, which as a parent is a tool to feel connected while your child is in school all day. Ms. Sefon was extremely communicative with all, all year, starting with a wonderful presentation during Meet the Staff Night. Her classroom was always clean and organized, presenting her students with a warm and a learning, engaging learning environment. She was extremely helpful when my child had technology issues with her Chromebook and took matters into her own hands when we were not getting responses from IT. Going above and beyond for her students is not something everyone does, and we were extremely fortunate to have had Ms. Sefon this year. I truly hope that my younger children will be able to experience the care and effectiveness that Ms. Sefon provides as the process of their education at Ralph R. Smith. Thank you for your consideration, Jessica Pacchio."
I'm Sarah Jensen. I am a parent as well at Ralph R. Smith and a former school monitor. I was assigned to Ms. Sefon's class this past school year. I would like to express my experience in working with Julia Sefon as a lunch recess monitor assigned to her fourth-grade class during the 23-24 school year. In previous school years, the monitors were separated between indoor and outdoor classes and stayed with the class for all of lunch and recess. I found this change to be very beneficial in building relationships with students and getting to know their personalities and needs. This also created a better professional relationship between the teacher and the monitor and allowed for clear communication when issues, good or bad, arose. The importance of knowing the students and building trusting relationships with them is so important in a school setting. Julia did just that. She was always very aware of each student's personality and needs. She always showed great concern and attention to her students while providing a caring learning environment. She always displayed a patient, caring, and professional personality when interacting with her students. In my experience, Julia made her students feel welcome, included, and comfortable. They expressed trust and care for her, for their teacher in return. Her students always expressed their love and adoration for her during my interactions with them. It is my hope that my son will be able to experience her as his fourth-grade teacher in the future at Ralph R. Smith. Julia was an excellent addition to Ralph R. Smith this year and should be, should continue to be in years to come.
My name is Colleen Vananda, and I represent Ms. Sefon. I'm actually here to read a letter from Ralph R. Smith's PTA president, who unfortunately could not be here tonight. So she says, "I'm writing to put forth my strongest recommendations and support for Ms. Julia Sefon. I've had the greatest pleasure of getting to know Ms. Sefon in a variety of capacities during the 2023-2024 school year, most significantly as a parent of one of her fourth-grade students at Ralph R. Smith and as the co-president of Ralph R. Smith's PTA. I can sincerely state in no uncertain terms that she has been a tremendous asset to the district. As a parent, I hold my children's teachers to the same high standards that I hold myself as a 21-year teaching veteran, and I'm very sensitive to the responsibilities and important roles that teachers play in their students' day-to-day lives. In every interaction, Ms. Sefon has impressed upon me the greatest dedication she has for her students, school, and profession, acting with integrity and thoughtfulness at all times. Her passion for teaching, her eagerness to collaborate with and listen to parents, her deep empathy for others, and her exceptional capacity to guide her students through rigorous, rigorous curriculum, new social situations, and state tests are truly remarkable. She engaged the class in many meaningful activities and field trips, and I will highlight the most recent one that I think perfectly sums up her commitment to her students and her families. In the spirit of student engagement and student-centered activities, Ms. Sefon's class this year worked on a produce, worked on producing a book together. Each student chose their hero and completed artwork, as well as a written piece that went through the editing and revision process to get to the final product. My son sweetly chose his older brother, and he worked with Ms. Sefon to select the perfect family photo of him and his brother for the book. There was great anticipation and enthusiasm for this activity, in no small part due to Ms. Sefon's encouragement and guidance. When the printed book arrived a couple weeks ago, I was touched not only by the work of all those children, but by the beautiful heartfelt letter Ms. Sefon wrote to the class that was included at the end of the book. She wrote that her entire class, each special child, was her hero, sharing not only inspirational words of wisdom, but highlighting ways each child inspires her. I do not say this lightly, she is truly the definition of an educator, and the district would be serving its students at Ralph R. Smith a great disservice if she's not in the classroom. As PTA co-president, I've seen from a very, from a different perspective how engaged and involved Ms. Sefon is in the school, community, and with her colleagues. She's eager to support all of our initiatives, encourages others to do so, and actively participates in events whenever she can. She's a pleasure to work with, and despite the fact that she's only been at Ralph R. Smith since September, she's made herself a significant part of our school community. I remember feeling worried that my son would have a new teacher for fourth grade, and now I laugh at how silly that was. I count myself, and more importantly, him, fortunate beyond words, that he had Ms. Sefon as his teacher, guiding him through the challenges of the school year. It's my firm belief that other students at Hyde Park deserve the same opportunity to have her as a teacher, and it would be a disgrace if this isn't the case."
Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. At this time, we will close public participation. Normally respond to what people say during, but we cannot comment on personnel matters from public participation. So with that, we're going to move on to 10.1, Board Subcommittee Reports, Professional Development Updates. So the list is here, for everybody to see what committees are on, Carl. Well, his name's missing.
Because he said he was coming.
Oh, no, you're going to be on negotiations, right?
Yes.
Oh. I'll put it back on. And also...
All right, I'll read through it. So Audit Committee, we have myself and Carl, not Kark, it's Carl. Code of Conduct is Margaret and Mike Tibbits. District Leadership Team is Margaret and Mike Tibbits. Negotiations Team is myself and Carl. School Board Association is Ed and Carl as an alternate. The Facility Steering Forum is Mike and myself. Government Liaison is Margaret and myself. Personnel Committee, Margaret, Mike Tibbits, and Christine. Policy, excuse me, Policy Committee is Christine and Carl. The Save Committee is Christine, and the Special Education Committee is Christine and Ed. We will revamp this once we appoint the new board member, so if you're overloaded, I know there's, I called out some names more than others, so, you know, we can, we can give relief.
I also don't, I don't think we need three people on the personnel, so you take me
So with that, did anybody meet any of the committees that they want to respond to? Oh, sorry. Technology is Ed Spence. And Zero Admissions is Mike Tibbits and Carl. So any committee reports? You know, they're kind of quiet this time of year.
The Justice County School Boards Association, we met informally as kind of an administrative council, a private meeting. We were talking mostly about some of the, you know, issues at the state level with foundation aid and things going on, and then we have a meeting coming up at the end of July to set the agenda for this year. The end of ours.
All right, moving on to 10.2, Board Discussion Including Consent Agenda. So, so we do have a new board member that's on the agenda tonight. What we did is we solicited input, you know, put people to, if they're interested, contact us, contact Jay, and we had a, had a meeting with two, two individuals who expressed interest. We kind of had an interview with them. The full board met with both people, and then we decided on one, one of the individuals. She's on vacation tonight, so otherwise she'd be here, but we will appoint her in new business. The date for the board retreat has been set for Monday, August 26th at 5 o'clock, 5:00 to 8:00 PM, here at District Office. District tour, we still need a date, and I know we put out a couple of polls, but I don't know if we settled upon a date to do that. So...
New dates, different times. Like, I, I've already offered you guys 15 dates and times, and I've got nothing, so I don't know where to start. Go.
Say nothing, you didn't get...
Well, I couldn't get...
I don't think we'll get a majority.
Yeah, yeah.
Or everybody. I think we should just go with the majority, with the most number of people.
Okay. I can do that. I was just trying to make it...
Yeah. I, I mean, to get this many people, it's not realistic.
Okay. We'll go with the most.
Okay. Any consent agenda questions?
Just a clarification on 11.24, Consultation Services, and there's a reference for a book license, if anybody, maybe Dr. Brown could clarify that?
Sure, I'm just going to open it up, so we're looking at this.
11.24, Diane Cunningham Consultant.
And that's under the description of services or?
I read through it, and I didn't find specifics.
Got it. So, yeah, the, thanks, Mike. The book license referenced in the contract is a book, it's like a workbook that Dr. Cunningham wrote. So in order to use it, there's like a, like a royalties fee to use it, that's part of the professional development. So we have license rights to reproduce her work for that period of time.
Okay. So is she doing presentations for the district, or is it just to use her publication?
No. If you, if you look at the other attachment, she will be leading the Authentic Performance Task Work that she started last year, and that's just a resource that will be used by the teams in creating those, in creating those.
Okay. Any questions?
Yep. No, no problem. There are hard copies that you can buy, they're more expensive, and the licensing fee, she basically sends us the file, and we can reproduce in accordance with that, like license.
Yeah, that's, that's, thank you. That's it for me.
Any other board discussion?
On 11.4, the Singularity Corrective Action Plan, there were two points in that document. One was Significant Deficiency Child Nutrition Cluster, and the second one was Material Weakness Child Nutrition License. And for the second one, it talks about how we are now a school for community eligibility. I was wondering why that didn't apply to the first one? Just curious. The first one, we have a, you know, a more completely, a corrective action plan. The second one says, doesn't matter, because we're, we get free soup lunch, so I'm not sure why it didn't apply to the first one, too.
I'll just say, the board had already approved the corrective action plan, but we didn't have a food service director at the time, so we had mentioned that the food service director would be the responsible person. So this corrective action plan is naming our new food service director as the responsible person. I did discuss the corrective action plan with the auditors at the time, well, they're still our auditors, but at the time of the last year's audit, and they had told us for the material weakness, even though we're CEP, we still need to have a plan in place for reviewing the applications that are received if we were ever to...
We may not always be on a CEP, you know? That's, that's was kind of what I thought, but I wasn't sure why that didn't apply to the second one, too. That's fine. I had one other thing, and that is, you know, I have on occasion pointed out that we've had a lot of late payments, and I just want to, this is 11.10, I just want to point out, looks like there's many fewer now, so congratulations.
Yeah. We're not really sure, like, how the, the claims auditor determines sometimes that payments are late, I think based on the invoice day, which with technology, this has not been helpful, because it seems that many vendors issue the invoice the same day that we give them the purchase order.
Right. I remember you had, you had reasonable explanation before, I just making note that that seems to have changed in this last one, it seems to be.
We do have a new accounts payable clerk, and she's, she's been doing a really good
Okay. Margaret, Christine, and myself attended the law conference down at Mount St. Mary's last week. So typical, you know, annual law conference that we went to. What were some of the things, like, the highlights of?
AI.
Oh, they talked about AI and integrating it into the school, so I think you guys will have your hands full with that coming up.
Was on the policy committee?
That was one thing that they, that they said we needed to look at, was what, was policies. And code of conduct for, let me write it down, there's something we talked, they talked about checking language in the code of conduct for something. Do you remember what it was, Christine? Sorry. Okay. I'll, I'll...
It's in my, I forgot my book.
I'll mention, but you talked about, we've got language for it. Okay. So, pass to Melissa. Okay.
All right. Moving on to 11.1, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move, Margaret.
Second.
Any, oh, no, all those in favor?
I'm not.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to 12.1, can I get a motion to appoint Katie Miles Brier to serve as a trustee on the Hyde Park Central School District's Board of Education until the next board member election, May 20th, 2025, effective immediately upon taking the oath of office?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm not.
So if you're watching, Katie, welcome. Did she take the oath of office yet?
No.
No, I thought she could do it beforehand. Moving on to 12.2, Tax Warrants and Tax Rates. Can I get a motion to?
Don't move, Tibbits. Second.
Any discussion?
I wasn't sure if the board would want to just hear a quick...
Sure. Yes.
Okay. So in, in the past, I had always done a formal presentation on the tax rates. A few years ago, we just talked about it during discussions, so it seemed to go well, and because of the presentations tonight, we decided to do the same thing. I do have the PowerPoint slides up here, there are also, Jay attached them in the public portion of the board docs, and we'll also have these available on the website. There's a few slides that I'll go over now, and of course, if the board has any questions, we can go to other slides. But first, I just want to point out that there's three, like, main factors for the tax levy, or for the tax rates, I'm sorry. There's the tax levy that's set by the board during the budget season, when we're planning the budget for each year. Once you adopt the budget, that has...
that has the actual tax levy amount in it. So that's the portion that the school district covers. Then there's also the taxable assessed values, which affect the tax rates. The taxable assessed values are determined by each town's assessor. They should be based on market value. And when the state determines that specific towns' assessed values are not at the fair market value, they will assess or actually assign an equalization rate to that town. We have five towns in our district, and this school year, there are three of our five, five towns that have an equalization rate that's less than 100, which means New York State has determined that their fair market values are not, or their assessed values are not at fair market value. We tend to see that when, when assessed values go up, tax rates go down. But when the equalization rates go down, our tax rates tend to, tend to rise. I'm not going to talk about every slide, but I could go back to any that the board would want to talk about. There is this calculation here. In the first two columns, we show the town assessed values that the county provided, but these were determined by the towns to come up with the actual portion of the tax levy for each school district. You'll see in the middle of the page, the equalization rate. Only Clinton and Reinbeck have 100% equalization rate. They both had townwide assessments in 2024. The other three towns have not had a recent townwide assessment. The town of Hyde Park has not had an assessment, a townwide assessment since 1994. So New York State is saying that those 1994 numbers are just about 37% of the actual value of the properties. Pleasant Valley last had a townwide assessment in 2019, and the state of New York is saying their assessed values are about 73.25% of the fair market value. And the town of Poughkeepsie last had a townwide assessment in 2023, but New York State determined that their assessments are now undervalued and that their assessments are about 94%. So whenever that is considered, basically, the calculation is to, is to determine what the tax rates would be so that each town would be paying their fair share according to New York State. So at the top of this page, it's a little hard to see. I have another slide that has, I think it has better information on it, if you're able to see. But the tax rate on true, which is in the, near the top under the column two, is 17.38. That's the tax rate for the true value of all the properties in the Hyde Park School District. But for any town that has an equalization rate of less than 100, their tax rate has to be higher for the school district to charge the same amount of taxes to the district, as if they were 100% assessed. So that's why you'll see for Hyde, Hyde, we're all just saying for Clinton and Reinbeck, their tax rate is about the same as the true value of tax rate, but for the other towns, it's higher. Because Hyde Park hasn't had an assessment since 1994, their tax rate is over 46. It's 23.6 for Pleasant Valley, and 18.4 for Poughkeepsie.
Did Hyde Park go down from last year?
The equalization rate, yes, yes.
What was the last?
It was 38, 38.3. This slide shows the change in the assessed values. Typically, we see towns increasing in their assessed values, but the town of Hyde Park did have a decrease between 2023, '24, and 2024, '25. Like I said earlier, as assessed values go up, the tax rates tend to go down. This slide shows the equalization rates for each town compared to the actual tax rates that are applied for this year and for last year. The true value tax rate, so the value based on fair market value, decreased by 1.03% overall. So you'll see, because Clinton and Reinbeck are 100%, that's what their tax rate changes. It's a decrease in 1.03%. But the other towns all have an increase in their tax rate. So for Hyde Park, it's 2.98%. For Pleasant Valley, 6.32%. And for Poughkeepsie, it's 5.29%. But those tax rates are necessary so that the true value of the properties would be the same as the other towns. This is just more detail about the tax levy by each town. At the bottom of this page, I showed what the actual tax levy change is from year to year. This slide shows the tax rate for the last few years for each town. The column that, or the row that's highlighted, like a yellow, shows the change in the true value tax rate, which has been decreasing for the last several years and for the four years that are listed here, increases each year. And then the tax rate changes. You'll see for most towns, that whenever they're assessed at 100%, their tax rate will decrease. But when the, when the equalization rates fall, their tax rates increase. Just some more historical information about the equalization rate and the tax rates. And then finally, we have just information about tax collection in general. The towns of Hyde Park and Poughkeepsie collect their taxes for the school district. That's because they have elected tax receivers. We have a tax collector here that's appointed by the board, and she collects taxes for Clinton, Reinbeck, and Pleasant Valley. She's also like the liaison for the district between the other two towns that collect their, their taxes for us. There will be information. But there is information now on the website. We do accept electronic payments, or people can pay by check or in person. Tax collection this year will be September 16th through October 15th, and there will be a 2% penalty period from October 16th through November 1st. The school district will not be allowed to collect taxes after November, November 1st. And at that time, any uncollected tax payments get turned over to the county. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I didn't answer them in my, what I went through.
Great, thank you.
Snuck in a presentation and important discussion. All right, so I think we're at, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 12.3, District Comprehensive Improvement Plan, DESIP, and School Comprehensive Education Plan. S, yeah, SKEP. Is that how you pronounce it? SKEP? ESIP, ESIP? Can I get a motion?
Don't move, Margaret.
Second, Tibbetts.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 12.4, Terms and Conditions for Employment Deputy Superintendent for the '24, '25 School Year.
Don't move. Second, Tibbetts.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 12.5, Personnel Matters. Can I get a motion?
Don't move, Tibbetts.
Second, Margaret.
Any discussion?
I'd like to hear a stand from this.
Any other discussion? I'm abstaining as well, so. I have a family member on the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Two extensions. 12.6, New Agenda Item. Doesn't look like anything's in there.
Nothing, nothing, sorry.
12.6 is not supposed to be there. All right, moving on to 13.1. Can I get a motion to enter our second public participation?
Don't move, Tibbetts. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Please note, as a general rule, public participation will be limited to three minutes total per speaker. The second segment will be limited to 12 minutes. The segment of time may be modified by the board as deemed appropriate. The board requests that remarks be courteous and respectful of all. Would anyone like to address the board?
Good evening. I'm Jen Valetta Husani. I'm a district employee, PTA mom, and a parent of three students in the district. So all my hats are here. I can kind of get rid of the first half of my letter to you because Julia so graciously introduced herself already, and I was hoping to be able to call in, but there wasn't any call-in line for your first participation. So I drove over in hopes to get you before you just blanketly approved your personnel matters. But I'll speak anyway. This is not the first time I've seen a coworker get terminated. 15 years in the district, and unfortunately, I've seen a few. But they've always followed a strict protocol. It was either a reduction of staff in excess, and somebody was the least of seniority, possibly an accumulation of poor observations and/or a denial of tenure for some, you know, various reasons. This case seems to be outside of all of those normal circumstances. I did write to the board that in June, asking you as professionals, some as educator professionals, some as, you know, just career professionals, to really take some time in your capacity to reflect on some of the various questions. Did the contractual process get met? Was there an adequate justification for termination? Is she being treated equitably as anybody else who had been going through maybe a termination process? Or was the decision possibly made outside of past precedents and was subjective, emotional, or grievance against her? I don't know, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but these are questions that, as an employee, I worry about. As, you know, I'm sitting here potentially a little bit selfish, too, to protect other employees who could go through the same process. It really makes me wonder. We have a teacher in the mentor system working with a mentor teacher, mentor SEL teams, mentor unions, mentor administrations, and that she could be given a letter of notification of termination without any prior counseling, without any pull-to-the-sides warnings, without any possibility of a growth mindset and giving her an opportunity to improve if there was an area that was of deficit. Being told you're not in good standing is very vague and subjective when the numbers averaged out, and she was, in fact, a teacher of good standing. But then, to be told that you had a justification for termination, and then HR to show up and give you basically the outline of a resignation letter. So are you being let go because of a justified termination? Or are you being pressured to resign because something just didn't add up right? Our PTA, our HPTA, sorry, union reps, were part of that pressure campaign. I hope that this process has been reviewed by a third party, nonpartisan, or if it was just internally reviewed. I, I think that's not the equitable process, because you cannot review your own internal processes, right? At, you know, without a bias.
Wrap it up?
Yep, absolutely. I'm just, you know, again, I'm here as a fellow employee. I'm worried about our processes in general. And I just ask that, you know, as we go through this, you know, want to make sure that we are using our academic coaches, using our mentor system, using our administrators who give us the observations to help better staff instead of use things against them to break them down and to treat them in this way. And it appears that a major downfall of Miss Sefon's is that she asked for help and wanted to improve throughout the year. And so, you know, I hope that, even though you did just prove 12.5, item I, that it can be reviewed again. And if you cannot check off the boxes that this was done in a truly open, equitable way, that it gets re-reviewed in a nonpartisan way so that she at least is given her due process in which our district's right equity is the big thing this year. So, thank you.
Love you, Julie.
Anyone else like to address the board? At this time, we'll close public participation. Moving on to 14.1. Any other matters deemed necessary by the board? Done? No need for a second executive session. Can I get a motion, 16.1, to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just, just want to, before we close out, just want to congratulate our new deputy superintendent, who's in the audience, Jessica Turner, as well as any additional staff that we have here that are being recommended this evening and were just approved. I would like to congratulate them and welcome them to the Hyde Park Central School District. And lastly, we had Therese McKenna, who's retiring after serving 20-plus years in the district. Just want to thank her for her years of service. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to everybody that's new here. I don't know who's new, but welcome to everybody. All right, 16.1, motion to adjourn?
Don't move, Tibbetts.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.